Okay, we'll, we'll call to order the Monday, March thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, Runville Select Board Meeting. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, approval of the agenda. Do we have any additions?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I, I have one under business for a use of the field, the Gilliam Field use.
Anything else? Okay, looking for a motion to accept the, or to approve the agenda as amended. Motion by Jason, seconded by Velma. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Public forum. So we have nobody here. Anybody from the board have any public forum items? Okay, moving on to approval of the minutes of February twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-three. One ring-a-dingy?
I move to approve the minutes of February twenty-seven.
Motion by Jason to approve, seconded by Phil. Any other discussion? All those in favor? In unanimous. And we don't have any committee and board reports. Managers' report. Let's start with the administrative inspection warrant of one fifty-nine Proctor Road.
Yes, the last discussion I had, and I think I put it in your notes, was specifically as to who could be on the administrative inspection warrant. I had given a list of people that I thought would be appropriate to go, and the attorneys advised me that their list is too expansive. It needs to be more narrow on, in terms of people that actually have authority through the town, which would be the code officer and the fire chief. So we, I instructed him to narrow that administrative warrant down to include those, and then we can proceed with, with the process as to move forward. So I was hoping that we'd be able to get other technical advisors there, but they indicated, or he indicated, that that wasn't the crux of what the warrant should be, simply because I think he, he was relating it on the fact that we had done all of our, all of our review and authority based on the cleanliness of the building, and that that being able to go in and observe if the material that was supposed to be removed from the photographs that were taken by DHS has actually, in fact, been done. The issue we had is that we had two containers there for an extended period of time. Only one got filled, the other one got half-filled. So the argument is, is that the, the order of cleaning it may not actually been accomplished. So that's the way he's explaining it to me at this particular point. So.
Is that the fire chief or the acting fire chief in there?
It will be, it will be one of them. It'll be a fire representative. We'll just have to narrow it down as if the chief is returned or not. I know he was on the initial walk. I don't think either Jim or him went in, but they stood, stood at the doorway at the time. So this time it'll give them authority to go in and take a look around.
So if they open the doors and look inside and they're like, eh, they're saying.
Then they didn't accomplish what they were instructed to accomplish through the order. So we can proceed and do our cleaning, do another review, make a determination by, at that point, whether or not it's, it's fit to be lived in.
How about the outside? We, we never really addressed the outside of that, did we?
We did not. It was not part of the, part of the review. I do know that there was an accumulation of material there, but I'm not quite sure if any of that got thrown into the dumpsters or not. I knew there were barrels outside, and everybody continues to indicate to, to the town that those barrels are full of contaminants, but we have no knowledge of that. And they've been there for, I'm sure, for an extended period of time. So I'm not sure if they're leaking or anything like that.
Is that something that we should start looking at now rather than wait much down the road, or?
I'm not, I'm not sure. Generally, it's behind a fence. It's hard to see. The material that was in front or near the, from the building, near the, the garage, that pretty well got cleaned up. I think some of that did find its way into the, into the dumpster. Other than that, I, I have no knowledge because I haven't been out back.
Yeah, I'm just concerned, you know, neighbors made comments about rats all over the place, and that's probably where a lot of those rats are in, you know, all of that trash and stuff that's out there.
Right. If the, if the trash has been thrown outside as opposed to being in the house, that could be a possibility, sure.
Didn't we also deal with structural problems, electrical problems? We, I mean, there were pictures of wires that were hanging out. I, Jason pointed that out several times.
Yeah, I, I, I don't know if it was directly in the order that we, that we provided. I have to look back at that paperwork, but yeah, I was concerned about that as well, whether or not that would be part of it. But obviously, if the code officer and the fire chief get in the building, then obviously they could see that there's exposed wires or inadequate plumbing and can report out on that as well.
Thanks. Anybody got anything else on that? All right, moving on to Casella and the transfer station.
Yes, I, I had a conversation with Chris McHale, who's now representing Casella, on the phone. He's supposed to be providing me something in writing, but our discussions came up with three options moving forward with, with, with Casella. The, the first thing that he determined this past year, they collected basically with the, with the monthly amount they got from the town, as well as the collection of the, from the punch cards, they collected approximately two hundred and nine thousand dollars to, for operations. He indicated to me that that was eighty thousand dollars less than what they need in order to operate the transfer station appropriately. So one of the options that he provided to me is that, number one, they do not want to do the punch cards any longer, and would prefer if, if they're going to continue to be done, that option two would be that the town would do those here at the office. Now, this past year, he indicated a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars of those punch cards were purchased at the transfer station. And the remaining balance of around thirty-two or thirty-four thousand was purchased here at the town hall. So he gave him about a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars or so of extra revenue from that. But his indication to me is that they're going to need somewhere around two hundred and ninety-one thousand in order to make it viable. Now, option one is that we could either do that strictly through tax dollars and weigh, or don't do any more of the collection. Option two would be to give a portion of that through tax dollars and raise the remainder of it through anticipated revenue and sell those punch cards here at the office. That just begs, the question for me is that we may want to raise the rate if we go that route, to go on the punch cards as opposed to what we're charging now, which, which may be low. And the third option was that we just take the transfer station back over again, hire the personnel, and they will charge us a hundred and fifteen dollars a ton to take our trash and truck it away. So those are the three options that he played out. So one would be fully taxed. The other option would be a portion of it taxed and the remainder collected via revenue, or take it completely over.
How much a ton?
A hundred and fifteen dollars a ton. So what I, what I did is I just looked at what our neighboring communities are doing in terms of what tax dollars they are. Discovered that Lyman puts aside three hundred and nine thousand dollars a year to operate their transfer station. The town of Alfred puts aside two hundred and forty-one thousand dollars to operate their transfer station. And the town of Waterbill, Waterboro, which is a little higher than us, obviously, they got eight, about eighty-five hundred people there, was six hundred and three thousand dollars a year to operate their transfer station. So we certainly have some, some discussions to figure out what direction that you folks want to go. But it's clear to me they don't want anything to do with the punch cards. They'd just rather have staff up there. People come up, get rid of their trash. They make sure the trash gets in the right locations. The only thing they would be collecting for would be, and that would, that's what they do now, would be for bulky waste. So if somebody wants to get rid of a TV and there's a cost to it, they'd have to write out a check to Casella to get rid of it. But the, the, the refuse or the solid waste, they would just soon do what they've proposed at this point.
So they don't, they want to get completely, they, they completely away from the punch cards, even if it's, they're just bought here in the office, or?
Correct. They don't want anything to do with punch cards up there. I think it's more, it's time-consuming. It may be, I'm not quite sure if it's, you know, it's, like he said to me, it's just not what we do. We don't mind having staff there and making sure, monitoring that things are put in the right place and keep things clean, but when it comes to handling cash or handling checks and things like that, it's not one of their fortes. So that's the way they explained to me. Those are the three options he gave me. I indicated to him that I want those in writing so I can present it to the select board and to the, and to the budget board during the process, but I thought you would at least like to know where, what they're thinking and what they're anticipating at this point.
So I know in Lyman, I mean, there's no, they just, people there, they can just go up and just dump, right? They just make sure that they're a resident and that's it.
Right.
Yeah, no, no punch cards, no nothing. So it's, and they don't even, I believe they don't even have to pay anything at all. They're just completely all out of their town.
And where's that?
Lyman.
Lyman, yeah. So then that was over three hundred thousand dollars, which is about the same, they're about the same population as we are. They may be forty-five to a hundred people more than us, but generally speaking, they're about the same. So I'm sure that they're generating the same type of refuse and tonnage that we are.
Do we know the tonnage of what's been hauled out of there?
I, I don't, I don't know the tonnage. I can ask the question of what the tonnage is. And that may, that may help us a little bit.
I mean, it would be nice to get some sort of a rough idea, you know, we pay X amount and then, yeah, whatever. It should be a good, good number to have, I think.
I'm all in favor of that being covered by the tax. I, I'm, I think that's a service that this town should offer its residents, but I also would want a strict regimen of knowing that it's our taxpayers going there, not people from out of town. And then anything over and above trash and recycling gets covered, you know, by the individual that's getting, you know, mattresses, televisions.
Correct.
Whatever. Yeah. But I totally think that should be a service that we provide.
Yeah. Yeah, that, that's a debate we had last year during the process, as you well know. So tho- those are the options that I'm looking at, or they're looking at right now, and we just have to make some sort of decision as to where we want to be within that process. So that's all I have right now. I'm hoping, once I get his information in writing, I sent him a, a quick note based on our conversations of what I thought we talked about. I want to make sure that what I think we talked about and what he thinks we talked about are the same thing before we move too far down forward, but it's safe to, to assume that it's not going to be ninety-six thousand dollars for taking care of our trash moving forward.
It's a Jason's point, you know, I want to make, if we do, as, as he mentioned. I mean, our neighboring towns, they, they complain about the inconsistencies there all the time, and I just don't want people from our neighboring towns coming in dumping, dumping their trash. So we need to make sure that.
Well, I think that's where the tenant, number, number one, we've got our car, we got our dump passes. We just make sure that we put on the pass maybe a registration of that vehicle, and we're going to have to rely on them to make sure that they monitor that and see who's coming in and and make sure it's done. I know that the, the town that I reside in just went to dump passes. They did not have them until now. So they charge, they charge you five dollars and you have to show them a registration and that you're a resident or a taxpayer of the town, and you have a property there that you're living in or something to that effect, particularly for the seasonal folks. And the registration goes on that card, and it gets put on your vehicle. So I think everybody sort of, trash businesses, I think, is getting tight, not only to get rid of trash, but the market for recyclables is not very high. I know that in some instances, trash gets thrown into a recyclable bin. So before you know it, that all that recycling is now trash, and it can become a real mess.
Do we know what, who Kenabunk and Kenabunk Port uses? Do they use the same company, or?
Not sure if they use Casella. I'm not, I'm not sure what I, I don't think Kennybunk uses Casella. They use a different company because they do curbside collection. And I think they have in another firm that runs the bulky waste collection for them over there as well. So it's funny, I was, I was traveling into town, I think it was on a Saturday, and I followed this vehicle from Route One South coming through town, and I was coming to the office, and all of a sudden it turned onto Limerick and started heading up, and I'm saying to myself, I know that trash ain't from here. So I followed it, but when he got to the Limerick Road to go down mountain, he kept going straight. So I said, oh, well, he's going someplace else.
He saw you.
To get rid of that trash. Yeah, maybe, I don't know. But I'm sure that some of that does happen from time to time, and people just don't want to pay the appropriate fee for that stuff to get rid of it.
I wouldn't think it's a whole lot of money, but.
Well, depends on how we want to, how we want to manage it, whether or not we want to anticipate any revenue. But, you know, when I look at that, if we did the, the, the punch cards, I would put in anticipated revenue of, you know, X amount of dollars. We fund the whole thing, and then if we anticipate the revenue to a certain amount, then we can monitor what we sell for punch cards here, but.
But they don't want to do punch cards.
They do not want to do punch cards. They don't want to sell them. If we still have them, they'll just punch them. And, you know, that will be no problem for them.
So that's what I had asked earlier. I mean, are they completely against punch cards or just completely against selling punch cards there?
They don't want to sell them.
All right. So if we would stay with the punch card, they're okay with it. They just don't want to deal with selling them there.
Correct.
Okay.
So if we stay with the punch cards, it would be my recommendation not only to, to stay with them, but to really look at what we're charging. I think we may be low in terms of charging. And, you know, I think it's, for me, in, in Wells, it's two dollars and ten cents a bag. And I buy them in five, they, they sell them at the transfer station, so I pick up the bags. But if your punch cards were, say, two dollars for every punch, then, you know, you'd be looking at what?
Dublin West today.
Yeah.
All right, it's forty dollars for.
It's twenty and forty.
Forty punch card.
So you'd be at forty to eighty.
Yeah, and it's a, it's a punch of car, a punch of bags.
Right.
It would double what it is today, which I think is still cheap, but.
So, I mean, those, that's an alternative, but you guys can make that decision, and whatever information I can provide you, I certainly will.
Very good. Anything else? Any other comments? Okay, moving on to business. Got a request to write off ambulance debt.
Yes, I provided to you the, the sheet that was developed with the deputy treasurer and the auditor to, to write off some debt. It looked, it appears that we have debt back to twenty sixteen, and they're anticipating a hundred percent there, twenty seventeen and a hundred, twenty eighteen and a hundred. And at that time, that's when we changed from the old collection company to municipal. It's a municipal, I keep forgetting their name, but that's when we changed. So the recommendation here is to write off fifty-seven thousand, two hundred and fifty-four dollars and forty-nine cents of outstanding debt. Should have been in your packet.
Lot of money.
Yep.
Any comments concerning that?
We run out on several of these. You can collect it anyway.
Right. I, I believe you may be, may be correct on that. I know the auditor was thinking about if we didn't take any action to maybe just provide us a management letter indicating that we need to systematically begin to look at some of these write-offs.
Okay, we're looking for a motion to write off fifty-seven thousand, two hundred and fifty-four dollars and forty-nine cents for ambulance debt.
Second.
Motion by Jason, seconded by Tom. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Okay, next item is the County Budget Committee caucuses.
Yes, it, it's scheduled for April twelfth, six-thirty at the York County Courthouse. The issue that we have is, obviously, we're in District Two. Right now, there are two vacant positions on District Two. One's elected, one's a public representative. Not sure if you have anybody in mind. We had, John Bell was doing it for us, and at the last budget committee meeting, he indicated to me that he really wasn't interested in continuing. So I suppose we can ask at the next budget meeting if somebody wishes to serve. There seemed to be some thoughts on it. I'm not quite sure how receptive they were, but and then obviously, there's nothing here that prevents you as an elected official to serve as well if you want to make another night out, but.
How often do they meet? Any idea?
I believe they're meeting, I, I believe they meet during the budget process, and that's primarily it, but I'm not quite sure. I haven't read the, the total statute is how the process and procedure works. But if you feel there's somebody that may be interested and you need to have more clarity, I certainly can get that.
John would know.
Yep, John would know.
He did it for a few years. Anything else on that at this point? Okay.
If you, if you know of anybody that you think may want to serve, just let me know. And I can always reach out to see if they're interested.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is approval, approval of payable warrant.
Can we, can we just do the Gilliam Field, for the league field?
You sure can?
Yes. Have an application here that has been issued by the Kennybunk, Arundel, Kennybunk Port Little League for use of the fields for, let's see, from, it says April first to July thirtieth. And both the Recreation Director and the Public Works Director have approved this request. The only ones that are remaining would be the Board of Selectmen to approve it. They have provided their insurance packages. In fact, they put them all for all three towns, and, you know, Arundles is, is in within the packet. So it would be seeking your approval to allow them to use the ball fields for the upcoming season.
I, I thought that they did, they do like a bunch of fertilization, whatever, and I thought that we couldn't use it in the spring.
Well, I, I think the, I think the major baseball field may still be in question. We'll have to wait to see once the snow covers whether or not we had a good catch. I think there were some concerns that we may not got all the grass that, that caught. So I, I think we can give them approval, but we may have to caveat that approval based on the fact that the ball field still may not be ready for, for service for the upcoming year. But they have other places they want to practice. So there's a, a plethora of a field, you, field space up there they could use other than the ball field.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that they're aware of what's going on there, because we, you know, if we sign this and I just don't want to get into a situation where they say, well, you guys let us use this, and all the work that was done in the fall just kind of falls apart, so.
What you're concerned about that, Phil?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
Who ultimately decides whether or not the field is too wet to play on, or like, whose, whose authority says, you know?
Well, I, I think that would, that would fall back on, on us as a, as the, the town. If we, if we felt that the field wasn't safe for, for use, then we could say, we can't, we can't allow you to use it, and we, we rescind whatever authority we've given for that. I would leave that up to the, obviously, the Recreation Director and the Public Works Director to take a look at those for you and make that determination.
So I'll make a motion we approve, then, with those stipulations that maybe both Jen and Roger sign off on the fact that the field is dry enough for them to play on, and.
Not, not just dry, but the grass is cold.
Yeah, and I wouldn't determine it bas- basically on the infield, maybe, both the outfield, and there's so much money that's been put into that field recently that, you know.
Yeah, I really doubt that field will be ready to play on early spring.
Okay.
It was seeded kind of late, and that seed's only going to take in the spring.
Yep.
And it's not going to be strong at all. Couple of games and that field will be poor right out.
Okay.
So we need to be very careful of that.
Well, we may want to get you involved in that, just to take a look at it as we get closer to to them trying to get on the field. So appreciate your, your review of it as well.
Hey, good. We got a motion by Jason, looking for a second.
Second.
Seconded by Tom, to allow use of the Gillian Field as long as, as Roger and the rective department has said it's okay to, okay to go. So all those in favor? Motion carries.
Uh, yep, it's right here. It looks like Board Chair needs to sign it. Put it on his responsibility.
So then section here where it says Select Board Insurance Promise of Part of the Registration. Seeding, conceding of the field.
Yep. Concerned that it may not be ready for the season. Make that assessment when the snow is off the field. Thank you.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is approval of payable warrant.
Some of.
Motion by Velma, seconded by Jason. Any discussion? All those in favor? Anything else?
The only thing I have is that we do have that TIF Capture Committee meeting on Wednesday. I, for me, weather permitting, I guess. I don't think we'll have any issues at that point. So and then we have a budget meeting the following Thursday.
Thursday.
Yeah, it's not Wednesday, it's Thursday. Yeah, that was a change that we made because I had, had scheduled somebody to use the, the room on Wednesday. So it would be 20, what is it, the 23rd? Yes, 23rd. Yep. In that evening, we'll have Public Works Transfer Station and Parks and Recreation. I'll send out a notice on that.
And then Wednesday is the TIF, 7 o'clock, right?
Correct.
I do have a question. And it, it's regarding to ambulance billing. When insurance pays the ambulance bill, it does not pay 100% of the bill. Are we writing off the rest of it or is that when the insurance pays, is that bill considered paid in full?
I'd have to get some clarity on that, but my, my thought was is that if it's not paid in full, then the, the perverse son who has had the, the use of the ambulance gets billed for the remaining balance. Now I have to just clarify that with the, with the Fire Department and the collection. I'll talk with Lisa tomorrow. And to make sure that I'm accurate in that, that, that assumption.
Okay.
So more than likely it was paid by insurance or some of them.
Correct. Yeah, I think there's a standard that they pay. And then after the standard, we try to set our rates based on the standard. So there isn't any additional cost after that, but I'm not quite sure how close we are right now.
Yeah, I guess it would depend on the type of insurance the person has, whether it's a high deductible or whatever. Yeah. Okay, anything else? Jason, you're up.
Hmm, to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn at 7:34 PM. Looking for a second?
Second.
Second by Phil. All those in favor? Motion carries. We are adjourned.